Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we have two meetings tonight. The first is the Urbana City Council meeting. That will be followed by a recessed meeting of the Committee of the Whole from last week. Would the Clerk please call the roll? Carol Ammons.
President.
Bill Brown.
Here.
Eric Jacobson.
Here.
Diane Marlin.
Here.
Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Charles Smythe.
Here.
Michael Madigan.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes for the previous meeting, May 6, 2013. Move approval. Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any. Okay, petitions and communications. James Kilgore. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
James Kilgore, 511 South Draper Avenue, Champaign. I'm here to speak, following up on last week's discussion about the issue of the -- this four-year look-back period for licensing of vehicle drivers for people with felony convictions. After last week, I've done quite a bit of thinking about this. I was pretty unsettled and agitated by the kind of framing of the discussion last week, and I think we kind of went a little bit off-base in terms of looking at what discrimination really means, and what having a human rights ordinance that bans discrimination really means. So, I'm concerned that we're coming up with categories for what I would call partial discrimination. That is, that we hive off certain groups of people who are not supposed to be discriminated against, and we make them into good ones and bad ones. Good felons and bad felons. People who have a crime of violence, people who don't have a crime of violence. People who have drug crimes, people who don't have drug crimes. People who've served time in prison, people who've served time in county jail, and so forth. And this hearkens back to some of the other kinds of partial discrimination that we've seen in the past, such as poll taxes and literacy taxes. And it's -- I think we need to realize that when a human rights ordinance says that we don't discriminate against people on the basis of criminal record, that's an absolute. That includes all aspects of that, and we can't simply take one subcategory of that group and target them. So, the idea of -- the idea of keeping this four-year look-back period is objectively discriminatory, and it takes away from the need to look at people on an individual basis. Having discussed this a little bit with Todd Rent, he says that the closest analogy for people with felony convictions is discrimination against people with disabilities. And his argument, as we've seen, is that you have to look at, on an individual case basis, and see if a person with a certain kind of disability is able to do a certain kind of job. But that -- and so, we've seen that when positions are now advertised and so forth, we don't see something which says paraplegics need not apply. The physical disability is not specified. The requirements of the job are what is specified. In this case, we're talking about the requirements of a job are driving a vehicle, and the requirements of a job are being -- having it be agreed by the employer that they want to employ this particular person. So, for example, if someone comes out of prison and they're -- and they have a family member who has a business, are we going to say that that family member has to wait four years to employ them because they have a felony conviction, because they've been in prison? We are not really looking at what it means to have a human rights ordinance that bans discrimination against people with felony convictions, against people who are formerly incarcerated, against people on the basis of their criminal record. It means that these two things cannot coexist. A human rights ordinance that outlaws discrimination against people on the basis of criminal record, and a look-back period of four years which applies to all people with felony convictions or with a prison release date within that four-year period. Those two things cannot exist, and to think that they can is hypocritical. So, I hope that you will seriously consider the implications of that human rights ordinance when you look again at this four-year look-back period, and I hope that you will also influence your colleagues and counterparts in Champaign to get this thing off the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Ammons.
Erin Ammons, 1108 North Bucy in Urbana. I'm coming to you tonight, and I think I provided a copy of what I'm going to read to all of the council members, if that was circulated to all of you. I put it up there. I don't know if Ms. Clark was able to pass it around yet. Okay, so, tonight, I'm coming to you as the president of Citizens with Conviction. We are a human rights advocacy group, and the letter reads, "Dear Mayor Pressing and Members of the Urbana City Council, we believe an ordinance that bans people with either a felony conviction or a prison release within the last four years from obtaining certain licenses for commercial driving purposes is a violation of your existing human rights ordinance which bars discrimination against people on the basis of conviction or arrest record. First of all, we question the evidence base of this measure. Before such a measure could even be considered, evidence must be brought forward to show that the banned individuals have a history which warrants such action, and that four years is an appropriate timeframe for this ban. In the absence of such evidence, this measure appears to be just a throwback to a mentality that extends the period of punishment for people with felony convictions far beyond the time that they have finished paying their debt to society. Secondly, the EEOC asserts that such blanket bans, given the disproportionate incarceration of African-Americans, amount to a form of racial discrimination. Since Illinois has one of the most extreme cases of such racial discrepancy, 57 percent of the state prison population is African-American, as opposed to 15 percent of the general population, we are confident that the four-year look-back period will end up disproportionately excluding African-Americans from employment opportunities. Thirdly, research has shown that employment is the key factor in reducing recidivism. Hence, any measures that block access to employment, especially in jobs that typically require minimum levels of education and work experience, end up contributing to higher recidivism rates and a reduction in public safety. Certainly, the council does not want to move in this direction. Given the above considerations, we urge you to scrap this regulation and find a way to consider the applications of people with felony convictions and recent prison records in a more just manner. We would be happy to discuss this issue further with you and work together to develop a more effective policy. Sincerely, Erin Ammons, President, Citizens with Conviction, and I have also CC'd the mayor in Champaign, as well as the city council members there." Before my time elapses, I would like to also add that Citizens with Conviction has been working with the Human Relations Commission here for almost two years now, working on a "ban the box" ordinance that we would like to have implemented here in Urbana, which increases the opportunities for individuals with felony convictions to get employment, to have gainful employment. So, it's certain -- this particular ordinance now, this proposal, certainly flies in the face of all of the work that we've been doing, all of the support we've gotten from the City of Urbana up to this point. So, I would urge you to maybe talk to some of the Human Relations Commissioners, to look at the work that we've been doing. We actually are in a window right now of a 90-day period of public hearings and input that's supposed to be given to Todd Rent, so that we can actually discuss this with the public, the "ban the box" ordinance. So, we are moving. The country is moving. The city is moving. So many different states have "ban the box" ordinances that they've put in. The entire country is moving into a realm of second chance opportunities and second chance legislation, and this does not fit into that bill. So, there's a lot more that I could say about this particular proposal, but in essence, we believe that there's no way that the city should have any interference in this particular issue. If the state has given me a valid driver's license, and the employer would choose to hire me, we believe that the city has nothing to do with that. Thank you.
Charlie.
Erin, I think, based on the conversations we had last week, and we're committed to moving forward in some fashion, and looking forward to hearing from the Human Relations Commission, I think we'll be looking for guidance on both issues from them. The question for you, and really what's important here, I think, is to try to work with Champaign to change their thinking too, partly because the request to include this has come from them. It'd be good to be able to have an ordinance that is similar, for similar reasons and good reasons, in both locations. So, I take it you're committed to going and speaking to them and lobbying them, not just CC'ing them here.
Oh, absolutely. You guys are a lot more friendlier to me over here in Urbana than they are over in Champaign. But I absolutely will be going over to the City of Champaign to also bring the same concerns to them, and I do think that we were approached by Mark Aber from the Human Rights -- I guess there's a little bit different, but we were approached to bring the "ban the box" material to them as well. I think there's some willingness to work over there, and I think that once people become more informed and educated about this, I think it may change some of the ideas and proposals around it, and that's what our hope is. But certainly, Charlie, we'll be going over there as well.
Thanks.
Just as a point of clarification, I believe that this is an existing ordinance, and what we are doing is changing some of the fees and everything. Is that correct? It was four years before? Is that correct?
It was.
Okay, so, it's not a new proposal, and what we did last week was say, we're going to move the ordinance forward, but we want to review the four-year part. Okay?
Right. Well, I thank you for the clarity, Mayor, and certainly, we know that this has been on the books for a while, and it's not something that's being posed, so we're not in sort of any sort of confrontational mode. We're just trying to -- once we became aware of it, because we're not aware of all the different things that are on the books, we've recently become aware that there's several different things that are similar to this that we're going to have to address, and so, we are aware that it's not something new, and that it's the four-year look-back period that we're particularly unhappy about.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, I just want to put on the public record again that, you know, when we first looked at this, and we were asked by staff to look at all the changes in the ordinance, but I actually looked at this, and I was the person who raised the question, oh, do we still want to do this? So, and I'm glad that this conversation is moving forward, because I agree with you that this does not make sense. I've been trying to look online as much as I can about, you know, how other cities deal with this, and there are a number of cities that have review boards that look at taxi driver license applications individually, and I don't think they preclude looking at conviction records, but they do take them in context of all the evidence about people and don't have arbitrary exclusions like this, and so, maybe this is where we're going to wind up.
Well, one of the concerns that we've had for a long time, and Eric, I thank you for raising the point, is that just because there are other ordinances or other cities that have discriminatory policies, I would urge us not to look necessarily for a smaller grace period or a smaller freeze period, because it's unjust period. So, even these other places that have them, we can go visit them too, Charlie, and see if they could change theirs as well. Many of the cities and states that have -- are now accepting and adopting the "ban the box" ordinance also had discriminatory policies or unwritten rules that banned individuals with felony convictions, and now, they have changed those. So, this movement and this wave of -- and this new way of looking at things, this paradigm shift, is what the catalyst is, I think, for the changes that are taking place. So, I'm just leery when I hear of us looking at other different cities who have seven-year periods. We've looked at them too, 10-year periods, whatever they may be. We just find it to be unreasonable and unjust, no matter how long that period of time is.
Well, let me share. I was going to wait until we discuss the issue, but let me share, at this point, a communication that I got from a constituent, and I didn't make it so specific a person could be identified, but this related to an incident in which a school discovered that one of the taxi drivers -- that one of the taxi drivers who had -- who was bringing children to and from school had a sex offense misdemeanor conviction. And of course, in our present thing, we wouldn't care about that, but the letter writer said, maybe we should care about that. So, I guess I want to look at all aspects of this, and I want to get away from some arbitrary thing, but there are some kinds of things that may be necessary for public safety.
We agree, and we are not unreasonable. We definitely understand that even though all the work that we're doing around "ban the box," we understand that there are certain convictions that a person may have in relationship to -- I'm just sticking with employment. If I have a felony conviction for embezzlement or something like that, then I can understand why Bucy Bank may not be interested in hiring me. We have those basic understandings in lieu of compromise so that we can move forward, and so, we're open to having more concrete discussions and more in-depth discussions for -- because we don't want anyone to be hurt or harmed in any way either, but we just think that there needs to be a much more in-depth discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol McCusick.
If you want to know what the law is that people give petitions and communications under --
Would you please state your name and address? Thank you.
Carol McCusick, 1907 North Cunningham Avenue. Mostly, I'm talking about the item that's called "An Ordinance Approving the Addition of Territory to the Urbana Enterprise Zone for Fresca International Soccer Planet Properties." Even though I just -- I'm sort of basically against the paving and parking lots for extra tax dollars, I -- it's not really a gimmicky objection that I have to the process, which it's -- according to Tom Carino, when he presented about this item at the Committee of the Whole on May 13th last Monday, he said, and you can listen to the video of it, he said that it's an ordinance allowing you to apply to the Department of whatever its community, economic opportunity, state DCEO that administers the enterprise zones, I But, part of this, the document that was -- that's presented, along with the -- what is the application? But the application isn't complete in at least two respects. There's letters of community of support, and they're just -- there are two letters referred to, but they're not there. And also, there's something called an agricultural site review information form that has to be filled out, and those -- I think those should be part of the thing that the council sees as they're approving it, whether -- you know, if you're approving, making an application, should the whole application be in there? The place is -- it's in the city, but it's right on the edge, so there's -- it's in municipal boundaries, and I think I tried to put -- but the people are not in the city. They're between Ward 3 and -- or Ward 5 on the east, in a big section, and that's not in the city. So, those people are going to be immediately affected by it, so I don't know what the processes the community development has for making sure that they know about that. Also, there was a change that Tom said there was in the paper. He said you have -- the council people had something. Okay. And I think the people need to see it the same week as the Committee of the Whole to -- for it to have passed that stage and go on to the next stage, because you can't -- you couldn't tell what that change was. So, you -- after last Monday, you can't tell. You didn't really see it that week as a member of the public. So, I don't think the first week of the process is taken care of yet.
Okay, thank you. I have Marcus Harris, who wants to speak at the time of the agenda item, which is later, and Bishop King James Underwood, who is concerned about the sewer problem in Dr. Ellis' subdivision, interested in its resolution, but not interested in speaking at this time. I have a proclamation to read, which is about National Public Works Week. Whereas public works services provided in our community are the most positive services provided by government, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, sustainable practices, and solid waste collection -- we don't do water or solid waste collection. We do recycling, though. And whereas these facilities and services help people strive for and live their lives to the fullest, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the community recognizes the dedication and skill of all public works employees who play an essential role in preserving the health, safety, and comfort of those in the City of Urbana. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the City of Urbana, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only this week, but throughout the year. And our Public Works Department really does do a great job. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? I don't believe so. Reports of standing committees, Committee of the Whole? Who ran the Committee of the Whole?
Okay, for the Committee of the Whole, we have seven items here. Ordinance Number 2013-437, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 26, Article 2, Vehicles for Hire, 2013. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Dennis.
All right, well, I totally get the idea about the problem of the discrimination clause in the Schedule for Hire. I think that that section should just be dropped right now by us. We don't support it. It doesn't work for us and our human resource and ordinance, and I think it gets -- it is the wrong direction for us. I think if, you know, we could say, well, we're going to leave it in and hope that we can work with the City of Champaign to change their mind, but I think we could just say that we don't agree with it. We should just strike that phrase from the ordinance, that section, and that's my suggestion. I'd like to hear comments on it.
Carol Ammons.
I also believe that it should be stricken. It does not fit with the Human Relations or -- I mean, Human Rights Ordinance of our city, but most important to me, as I spoke to many people, and I understand what Eric's talked about, that particular incident, unfortunately, the application of this process is not equally administered when it comes to people with felony convictions, people getting opportunities or jobs. If you have more resources, then you can kind of usurp the process, but if you don't have any, you really are stuck. And so, I also tried to figure out, you know, what's the most critical phase for a person who's either recently released, and we do know people are released in the State of Illinois who have spent many years in prison, and we're innocent. We know that that's factual. We have one in our local community. And so, that person also has to work many, many years to try to get over this, not only wrong for conviction, but also the implications of the felony itself. And I believe that that has a lasting effect on a human being. But the most critical period when they are released, or even if they don't go to prison, because often people get felonies and they don't go to prison, is the first six, eight months after that felony, because if you have low skills, when most people have low skills and can only do certain types of jobs at that level, then if they can legally drive, if they are able to obtain a license from the Secretary of State, and they don't have a poor driving record, which my employer checked my driving record, I think those are all critical parts of the decision to hire. That should not be necessarily a precluding factor in the City of Urbana, or Champaign for that matter, if a person is legally able to meet the qualifications of driving a vehicle. If there is a crime, whether you have a felony or not, I am certain Urbana Police and Champaign Police Department will do an absolutely superb job getting you for that crime that you've committed. And so, the person does not get away because we give them a license to drive a vehicle. If they commit a crime, or I commit a crime, I have to pay for the violation of that law. And so, I support striking the language, absolutely. I support striking the language, and I think we should support it on the basis of it's not in line with our own human rights ordinance.
Diane Marlin.
I don't support striking the language tonight. I do -- I am open to looking at this particular provision with the City of Champaign and working toward a different solution, but at this point, we have a Vehicles for Hire ordinance before us, and this isn't a simple matter of someone who's eligible to get a driver's license. We're talking about people getting a driver's license and then driving people to their homes, can be late at night. If you're a driver, you have an opportunity to learn about a person, where a person lives, whether they live by themselves, even their financial situation. So, there's another layer of public safety that I think needs to be considered when you're talking about vehicles for hire, whether you're a taxi cab driver or a charter van driver or whatever. So, this is not just a simple matter of striking, in my mind, of striking this particular provision from this ordinance, because I think there is a public safety factor we have to consider. So, we can look at this provision, we can look at doing it on a case-by-case basis, but we also have to take the situation on a case-by-case basis, and in this situation, I think, when you're looking at vehicles for hire, it's more -- it's not just simply a matter of who can pass the driver's license test.
Eric?
I have a comment or two, but before I do, I'd like to ask the attorney, what are the consequences of our not passing this at this point? Does this mean that Champaign and Urbana simply don't have an ordinance, or we have the old ordinance, or what's -- Or we have the old ordinance, or what, what, what's the situation?
If you don't pass this particular proposal, the other ordinance, unless you do something further, remains intact, which does, and apparently has, from what I understand, for a number of years, included this four-year look back. So, you're stuck with the four-year look back. Um, and depending on what Champaign does with the, I assume they're going to be considering this in the next week or two, uh, we may end up with a divergence of the two ordinances in the two cities. If they can't get together on this and maybe other issues, we'll end up going their separate ways and presumably either doubling, or at least making the, uh, the individuals who drive hired vehicles, you know, to atone to do different and separate ordinances, even though we share a contiguous border.
Yeah. So, okay, so in that context, I, I think I will not support an amendment to strike that clause tonight. But I, I do, um, I don't want it to stay indefinitely. It's neither logical nor just, it's unjust because it's illogical. I guess the other thing that I've found in the research that I've tried to do, and I'm not an expert in criminology at all, but crimes by taxi drivers are a very, very, very small fraction of, uh, crimes associated with taxi drivers. Overwhelmingly, it's crimes against taxi drivers that, that are, uh, a much bigger problem, although I don't think either of those, you know, has been a significant problem here. So, I, I will vote to, um, to pass the ordinance as it, as it is tonight, because it is improved from the previous one, but, um, I certainly want us to, uh, to work towards changing that, that clause. And of course, we may wind up with a situation where we have to, because, uh, I imagine that this could be the basis for a complaint to the Human Rights Commission. And, uh, it, uh, um, you know, and, and, uh, or even, or we might not even stand up to a legal challenge, uh, if this could possibly be found in violation of our own ordinance. So, so I do, um, uh, you know, this ordinance could be in conflict with our human rights ordinance. So, so I will vote to pass this tonight as it is, unamended, but, uh, we've definitely got to fix it.
Charlie.
I don't disagree or, you know, with, with anything that's been said so far. In fact, I agree with many of the aspects of it. I think I want to add one small thing. You know, at one time, such policy may have been appropriate, it might have meant something. As it's currently written in, in how, how society has developed, um, it's no longer a meaningful policy. And we need, so it's not a good policy, and this is something to take to Champaign. We need to have a good policy here if we're going to do something like this, which is, I think, something that, that several of you have alluded to. So, let's develop a good policy, let's get it back here in six months, or within six months. Let's run it through, you know, let's talk about it with Champaign, let's run it through the Human Rights Commission and, and get some good public input, but, but ultimately, we need a good policy. What we have here isn't applicable to today's society.
Bill.
Um, yeah, I think when, when you, when someone commits a felony, they, I think they do commit a violation of the public trust, and it might be reasonable to consider some period of time where the public has to regain trust in someone when they have a, um, a position of, that, that, a responsible position. Um, so I don't think it's unreasonable to, um, ask for some period. I do think that a flat four-year period is, is unreasonable and, and probably a violation of our human rights ordinance. Um, so I'd like to see it changed, I don't know, um, I don't necessarily think we need to do it tonight. I mean, the ordinance that we're voting on, we're actually voting on amendments to an ordinance, so I can justify it in my own mind, I'm not saying that I favor it, because I'm not really favoring it. I'm voting for the amendments that change the other things. Um, but I think, um, the, last, last week, I did suggest one possibility where you could have, uh, an individual case basis look at things, and maybe, and maybe there'll be others. You know, we might look at, um, probation periods or something, that somebody else has already made an individual judgment on someone, and I think that's what will be needed. Um, so, yeah, I don't think I would support an amendment if it was offered. I think we do need to look at this, and I would hope that we would be able to individualize any kind of response.
Okay, we have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammons?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
As written, no.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Charlie?
Uh, clarification from, from our clerk. Last week, we did direct staff to bring us back revisions in six months, right, to this?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I just want to remind people that we do have staff direction to bring us back, you know, to work on this over the next six months, so, okay. Uh, the next item is ordinance number 2013-0542, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement, first amended and restated with Cake Design Development LLC, 206, 208, 210 West Main Street, the Macho Project. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
A motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Carol.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the committee to consider in omnibus fashion ordinance number 2013-05042 and 2013-05043, and I so move.
I second that motion.
Is there any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay, um, I think we have to vote to do it, so we don't really save a lot of time on doing this. Okay, there's, there's a motion, did you, was there a second? Okay, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance number 2013-05-042 and 2013-05-043, rather, both dealing with the, um, restated Cake Design Development?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Well, in light of that, um...
Actually, if it changed the budget ordinance, I should vote on it, too. Right?
Yes, you should vote on that.
The second one changed the budget.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
Okay, in light of that, I'm tempted to move the-
And it still carries.
I'm tempted to move the next four in omnibus fashion, if, if there are no objections. I'll just read them, move it in omnibus, and we'll take two votes and get it over with. Okay, items D, E, F, and G. So, ordinance number 2013-0541, an ordinance approving the addition of territory to the Urbana Enterprise Zone for Ask International Soccer Planet properties. Ordinance 2013-540, an ordinance requesting a permanent easement and temporary construction easement from Urbana School District Number 116, that's Ray Street between Iowa and Michigan. Resolution 2013-520R, a resolution authorizing execution of a construction engineering services agreement for federal participation with Clark Deets Incorporated, this is the Goodwin and Avenue and Green Street intersection. And item G, Resolution Number 2013-521R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a local-agency-state agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Goodwin Avenue and Green Street intersection. I'll move these in omnibus fa- uh, move these in omnibus fashion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
A second, um, by Jacobson.
The first motion is to, to include these in omnibus, I should say, these are included in omnibus fashion, so we take two votes.
Just a, right, but I just wondered if you had a second to the omnibus thing. Mr.? Um, Dennis.
Okay, that was seconded, not by myself.
Okay.
I just, I just want to say that I kind of disagree with lumping everything together and, and passing it all at once. When we have two related items, like we just had done, that's more appropriate, although we just found out that actually on one of them, Mayor should vote, and one of them she should not, because it was a budget item, so that's really not an appropriate action. And the second one is, and, and if we lump everything else that the, the committee of the whole has done, we don't allow any kind of conversation for any of these objects, and we don't know for sure that there's not conversation.
Dennis, that's why I asked if there was any reason not to put them, you've just given a reason. I mean, if you don't want them lumped, you should just object, and I won't even make them, I wouldn't have even made the motion.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that the motion's been made and seconded, so I, I think it just probably-
It has to be unanimous. If it's not unanimous, we can't do it. So, either-
So, I make an objection about it.
Okay, there's an objection, so let's just take them, or take them individually.
You have, you have to withdraw the motion or the second, either way it'll die.
I'll withdraw it.
I, I just want to point an order for a second. Item D is not in relationship to, uh, F and G, who actually could be taking an omnibus motion, because they are two of the, on the same issue, but item D, I'm, I'm understanding you can't take an omnibus, is that right? Because it's separate, it's an actual separate item.
Technically, you are correct, because one requires the mayor's vote, and the other one does not.
Okay. So, I, I guess we can move them all individually at this point.
Yeah, it's, like I said, sometimes these omnibus attempts are just not worth the time. It's easier, okay, let's start over again. So, item D, ordinance number 2013-541, an ordinance approving the addition of territory to the Urbana Enterprise Zone for Ask International Soccer Planet properties. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
So, I, I don't vote on adding to enterprise zones? Guess not. Okay, that motion carries.
Ordinance number 2013-540, an ordinance requesting a permanent easement and temporary construction easement from Urbana School District Number 116, Ray Street between Iowa Street and Michigan Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, Resolution Number 2013-520R, a resolution authorizing execution of a construction engineering services agreement for federal participation with Clark Deets Incorporated, Champaign, Illinois, Goodwin Avenue and Green Street intersection. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And the last item is Resolution 2013-521R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a local-agency-state agreement for federal participation with the IDOT, Goodwin Avenue and Green Street intersection. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. A- Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Charlie. Reports of special committees, I don't believe we have a report, report of a special committee. Reports of officers. Um, I would like to report, um, a resolution that I'd like to bring up at the next, um, committee meeting, which would be to ask hospitals to pay their fair share of property taxes. And I list the fact that Urbana is in a region that's served by Carl Hospital, which has 1.2 million people, Urbana is only 3% of their population, and our property is 83% of their exempt property. So, um, I'll bring it up, but, um, anybody had any, have any questions about Carl at this point? I'll try to answer them. Diane.
Well, I don't have a question, but I would just like to say I'm looking forward to voting for this resolution. I think the, um, property tax exemption law crosses the line, and it just demands too much from one small city while an entire region benefits, and it's completely unsustainable. The, the state legislators, Governor Quinn, need to operate on this law. It's inequitable, and I think it's unconstitutional, and they need to fix it, and I look forward to helping them do it.
My favorite part is unconstitutional.
Here, here.
Okay.
Do we need to move this sentence to committee, or is it automatic?
No, it's just, it's not on the agenda, but I'm, I'm just reporting it. Um, okay, under new business, uh, we have appointments. Uh, Public Arts Commission, Eric Jacobson, and Traffic Commission, Michael P. Madigan.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries, and I would like to tell Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Madigan it was unanimous. Okay?
Well, I abstained, and I noticed that my, it also-
Okay, all right. Oh, it wasn't unanimous. All right.
Well, we recused ourselves, it goes with the majority.
Okay. Um, then we have a council appointment, uh, Mayor pro temp. That was, that's to be moved by the council. There haven't been any yard signs out, I see, for this, so...
I thought you've done the nomination in the past, but...
Um, no, I think it's actually the council. Has there been discussion about this? Traditionally, we've had the senior, um, the senior council member, and that was Dennis, but Dennis decided he didn't want to do it, so then it was Charlie, who has done it admirably, as did Dennis, um, the previous four years.
So, I'd like to make a nomination.
Yes.
Uh, Charlie Smythe.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Eric Jacobson. Any other discussion? Any other nominations? Any other gluttons for punishment? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Thank you. Okay, um, Resolution Number 2013-05-022R, a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. And this is one of those convoluted things, but we have Robert Myers to explain it to us.
Okay. Try to deconvolute it as best I can. This, uh...
You need your mic closer, I think.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, my name's Robert Myers, I'm the Planning Manager with the City of Urbana. This first case is, both of these cases are, um, county zoning ordinance amendments. One is for the change the text of the zoning ordinance, the other is to change the zoning map. And so, you might naturally ask, why is the city involved? And that's because under state law, uh, cities have, uh, with comprehensive plans, have, uh, the ability to protest if they feel is necessary, any changes to the county zoning. And that would, doing so would trigger a three-quarter supermajority requirement before that zoning amendment could be approved by the county, the county board. So, in this case, we have two different, um, applications. The first is to change the county zoning ordinance to allow contractors' facilities in the county's B1, that's Rural Trade Center District, and also B5, Central Business District. And there's actually, uh, no areas within a mile and a half of the city are zoned, either B1 or B5, and there's no plans to rezone B1 or B5. And, uh, based on city staff's review and the Plan Commission's review of this zoning text amendment, uh, the Plan Commission at their May ninth meeting considered it and recommended that this body defeat a resolution of protest. In other words, what's in your packet, that, the resolution that's in your packet, please do not pass it. That's the recommendation of the, the Plan Commission. But you obviously have the option to do as you choose and as you see, as you see fit, so... Plan Commission, their May ninth meeting, recommended that you defeat this resolution of protest.
Mr. Madigan.
All right, so is the newbie around here, I want to make sure I'm right on this. So, to defeat the resolution is to support the businesses that want to split the use of their properties and build storage units.
Uh, basically, yes. I mean, it would, it would, uh, allow the county board to consider, um, changing their zoning ordinance to allow these sorts of uses in those zoning districts, in B1 and B5.
Okay, let me pose it a different way.
Yeah.
Is this what the businesses who have brought this to the county want? this to the county want? Do they want the resolution defeated?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right.
Is there a motion? Diane?
I move to defeat a resolution of protest against the proposed text amendment to the Champagne County zoning ordinance, and this is B plan case, CCZBA 734-at-12.
Second.
Okay, that's resolution 2013-05-022R. Any discussion? Charlie?
Yeah, so just to clarify it, so we vote yes, and we defeat the motion, and the county board can proceed with a regular vote as opposed to a supermajority vote. So all we would do by not defeating this would be to force a supermajority vote on their part. And we've occasionally had required that through the years. Question for Robert. Okay, yes, I think Mr. Madigan stated it the way. This is basically allowing people to build self-storage units. We have some of those already scattered around town. If somebody were to build or change the zoning, and it was built in the ETJ, would it be more or less compatible with the sorts of things that we currently have of this sort?
It depends.
Yeah, let me give you some examples. I'm thinking like the one out on Main Street, just across from FS, for example.
Right. I put it in the context of the comprehensive plan, so I would look to guidance for a comprehensive plan and see if it was compatible or not, but potentially, yes. What they're proposing is that contracted facilities with outdoor storage wouldn't be allowed by right in the B5, but it'd be a special use permit. But those with just indoor storage would be allowed by right in those zoning districts. So the ones that would have more of effect on the neighbors, that would be a special use permit in the county anyway.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's wise for them to do.
Okay, thank you.
Carol?
Can you tell me where B1 is and B5 currently?
The way I understand it, within a mile and a half of the city, there's not any B1 or B5 zoned property currently. So this would really only affect the really rural areas out in the county. So I don't see us really having that much of an impact on the city.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry, I have one...
You have a question?
Yeah, I was ready to vote no on the resolution before us, but now I think there's a motion to defeat that resolution, so I would vote yes.
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Are you going to call the roll?
I have a question.
Oh, okay, sorry, Dennis.
Was there a conversation that came up that Champagne did not pass this because it wasn't really part of their comprehensive plan? Isn't there a conversation in the planning commission that this question came up about Champagne, the City of Champagne's comprehensive plan? Am I getting that?
I'm not sure. Generally speaking, the City of Champagne doesn't take a stance on the county zoning text amendments. They just have a little bit different viewpoint than us.
Yeah, I'm referring to it. Okay, so I'm referring to the letter that came from the businessman Jesse's Heating and Air Conditioning. He was told that if he wanted to do this credit self-storage facility, that the City of Champagne would have to approve it as well as, you know, us, because we're also in the county. And he says in his letter that Champagne will not support the project, and the reason stated was that the project would not follow their comprehensive plan. So the City of Champagne is not really eager to support this, and I guess my question is then, do we have a different feeling about it?
I haven't spoken to, I haven't spoken to the City of Champagne about that particular case, so I'm not really sure. I just know, generally speaking, the City of Champagne doesn't really get involved one way or the other with these county zoning text amendments or map amendments.
But they are in the county, and they had to vote on it just like we do it, don't they? Or is this, of course, this has come to us, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if we're like, you know, talking on the same page with our co-county neighbors.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I believe in that same letter, though, that it was kind of a site-specific objection on the city's part that the property owner, Jesse, actually rebutted in the letter. So I don't necessarily think it was a philosophical or a programmatic problem. It was more of a site-specific problem by Champagne.
Good. We are in the middle of a roll call, correct?
We're about to.
We're getting ready for a roll call. Getting ready for a roll call. Discussion is over. All right. Is there any more discussion then? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, I vote to defeat.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carried. Sounds kind of ironic. Okay, on the next one, resolution number 2013-05-023R, a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champagne County zoning map, rezoning a 1.46 acre tract of land known as 1414 Triumph Drive from County I-1 Light Industry to County B-4 General Business, and Marcus Harris would like to speak to that.
Hello, my name is Marcus Harris. I know some of you from being here last year and talking about this project, actually. And so I'm just here really to answer questions, not so much to give, if you need background and so on, on what we're doing with it, I'd be happy to do that. If you remember, I was a gentleman who wanted to open an indoor shooting range and a gun shop, and we looked at the text amendment for the city code because there was nothing in the city code that allowed that. We went through a long process with both this board and with the planning commission. After long talks, we decided that, well, you would allow it with special permit usage in the I-1 and the B-4. After talking to a neighborhood group of the building that we were looking at and looking at the logistics of the building, I found another building, which is the building that we're now talking about, out on 1414 Triumph Drive. It's farther away from residential areas, it's more suitable, it's larger, it has a larger parking facility. It took away that problem. My one problem was when I went to the county, they said, under their, looking at their zoning, they felt that an indoor sports facility in a B-4 and a sporting goods retail in a B-4 fit what they wanted to. So now I had an I-1 building that I needed to be B-4, even though you folks thought that an I-1 was more suitable. So that's where this all started. And then I took it to the county. The zoning board of appeals approved it unanimously to change it. It then went to the environmental land usage committee, which all but one person approved that change at the county level. The only person, the one person that objected would have liked to have seen the same process that you folks all at the City of Urbana, as far as changing the specific text in the zoning. That was her only problem. She didn't object to our project. I then came to the planning commission meeting, and the Urbana Planning Commission approved it, not unanimously, one person was in objection, but everybody else approved it. And so I'm here now asking you for approval, or I shouldn't say approval, I'm asking you not to protest, in the same way, not protesting the other, so that a simple majority at Thursday's meeting with the full county board will allow us to change the zoning and then go forward with our plan to develop this facility.
Good, thank you. Did you have anything to add, Robert?
I would just add that, in this case, this is a zoning map amendment. It's, again, from its county industrial to I-1 to county B-4. And it's generally in conformance with our comprehensive plan, future land use map for the rural areas just beyond the city's borders. There's a notation, actually, in our comprehensive plan, quote, rural agricultural business opportunities along US 45, assisted marketing. The zoning within Triumph Drive, that industrial park, it's a mixture of both industrial and commercial. And in terms of location for this particular business, it seems like it has a lot of benefits in terms of, just in terms of location, neighbors, impacts, accessibility to interstate and other such factors. So city staff recommends, and the plan commission likewise recommends, that the city council defeat a resolution of protest.
Okay, thank you. Diane?
I had a question and a comment. The question is, on that piece of property, there's another building, and there's no use specified for that at the moment. Would that be a case where you'd have to get a special use permit for a second type of operation there, or...
Yes, we had looked into actually a possible second use as far as fencing it off and renting it to someone else, but it would require a special use permit, and at this time, we're not going to do anything with that building, we're not going to ask for that. We've looked at other development possibilities as far as including an indoor archery range, and possibly that building would be useful for that. And then also just gatherings, you know, for the facility as far as, I talked to you before about, we're in a very good location as far as three hours from Chicago, three hours from St. Louis, two hours from Indianapolis, and about two hours from, makes us the mid-state location for, for example, a weekend shooting tournament for a junior league or something like that. So that building could possibly be redeveloped and used for that, but that's what we're planning. So we're not planning on dividing it off and doing anything with it really right now, so...
Okay. Any other...
Is it appropriate to make a comment, or should I wait?
I think we need a motion right now, really. Bill? Oh, Bill has a question, too.
I just have a couple of questions. I noticed on the map, there was, I think, a septic field and a well site, but you're also within the CU sanitary district. According to the lines that collect, the CU sanitary district goes up a little ways, but the lines don't go up that far. I just wondered if you're paying taxes into the sanitary district. Do they have plans to connect you pretty soon, or...
I do not know. We have a well and a septic, and I didn't realize we were in the sanitary district as far as paying taxes to them. I assume we are out in the county rural. Everything on there has its own septic and its own well, all the businesses out there. No one's hooked up, and there are, as far as I know, there are no sewer lines that go out that far.
Yeah, the sewer lines didn't seem to go out.
I would think they stop at the other side where the wards end where you're, so...
Oh, did you know the answer? Okay. And then looking from the aerial photos, it's kind of an industrial usage. I do think it's more appropriate probably for business because of the traffic volumes, ease of access, and we could take advantage of that. So actually, two more quick questions. One was, I noticed you had, or maybe it wasn't you, it was probably the business owners that had the listing of how many, how much sales taxes would be generated, listed county and Urbana. Do we get sales taxes because it's within our EJD or whatever, or does it have to be within our boundaries to get sales taxes?
That figure came from, my business partner is Tim Murray in the University of Illinois, actually, Business Department. He, in between the time that I met with you last, I had met a gentleman who was also trying to develop a range, and his name is Tim Murray. He actually is the Morgan Group, he's a firefighter for City of Champagne. He got chosen by the Business Department at the University of Illinois. As they do every year, they take some upstart businesses, they take them and they help them develop a pretty extensive business plan. And so that comes from his business plan, actually, those numbers that you saw, the $2 million revenue and then the tax revenue that comes to the county into a, I can't remember if there's a number for the city or not, and that would be a question, I'm not sure how that, if you do get revenue from it, I would assume somewhere some revenue is generated for you through the county, and then, but I'm not sure exactly.
I don't think Urbana gets any sales tax from outside our city limits.
Okay. And then just back to the well again, looking from the aerial photo, it is kind of an industrial area, and I was a little concerned, is that well water drinkable, and how deep is it? Do you know?
That would be a good question. That building has been there. It was originally Rush Equipment was what that building was, and it was a parts for, it was a rental facility, and they sold plow parts throughout the state of Illinois in pretty large operation. Then that family sold it to RCS. RCS bought the whole building, and they ran a industrial rental service out of it, and then that became, merged with United Rental, and they moved around the corner. So as far as the well, I mean, there were people there, you know, using it, and it's been in use for as many years as the building has been there, and the building's been there for some, I guess, yeah, at least, at least, I think mid-'80s was when it was, if not earlier than that. It's been added on to a few times, so. We haven't yet gotten that far on the process of, but we will check the water quality and make sure that it's drinkable, and so on, so...
And this, sorry, one final one.
That's okay.
I noticed in the proposal, too, you mentioned the manufacture of ammunition. I know some people that load their own cartridges, and that's pretty small scale, but it sounds like they might be loading more cartridges than you would do on a workbench at home, and would that be a manufacturing use that would conflict with business use?
Actually, after looking at it, our group has decided we will not do any reloads, and we will not sell, and we will not allow reloaded ammunition to be shot on our facility. So we're actually, that part of the, and this is, that was kind of a convoluted, that wasn't part of the original plan, and that's actually not going to be, so.
Thanks.
Diane?
Well, I would move to defeat the resolution number 2013-05-023R, which is the resolution of protest against the proposed map amendment to the Champagne County zoning map.
Is that seconded by Charlie? Okay. Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any more discussion? Dennis?
Yeah. I just appreciate the fact that your business reconsidered after getting neighborhood input, to look around and still remain within the Urbana area and provide a service that I think, you know, a lot of people will be interested in doing, but maybe at a more appropriate location, so I'll support this. I think that it was very thoughtful of you to take public input and reconsider it enough to do a business plan for yourself that would be a win-win for the community and yourself, and so I congratulate you on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Diane?
I would just like to second what Dennis said. I thank you and Mr. Hazen for meeting with the neighbors, and Dennis and I both sat in on those meetings. And actually, I think the location you have now is so much better than the original one you were considering. This is going to be a regional operation, and this has much better access from the interstate and from a major thoroughfare. So all in all, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, we may regret that he's not in the city, if he's really successful.
How close is he to you, like?
But it's close, close, but not close enough. But it will benefit, you know, the 1% sales tax benefits the schools, and of course, the hotels nearby may benefit, so your weekend tournaments will be a great idea, frankly.
And we hope that even so, you know, if people are going to our range, they may stop at Farm and Fleet and Shop, they may stop at other locations, you know, that are in the city or just down the way, restaurants and other things if they come down 74. So my hope is that, yeah, I was going to say Hickory River is right on the drive right there, and possibly...
Uh-oh. Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, but, yeah, so I appreciate, and I really do appreciate the Learman Group coming and talking to us and us talking to them, and we've had a good dialogue, and we've done some things to help out the community garden, some other things. So it's opened up some opportunities, and so I'm happy that we could find a location that suited everybody's needs, and we didn't have to force something, so...
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Mike?
I just want to say, thanks for bringing a great project to the area. It's going to be great for the community. I think a lot of people are really looking forward to it, and I think it'll help out our local law enforcement as well. It's another great opportunity for them to practice.
To train.
And to train, and that's something that they don't enjoy right here in the community year-round.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? This is a motion to defeat resolution number 2013-05-023R. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned, but there's a committee of the whole coming right up.
Do folks need a couple of minutes here before we get going? Couple of minutes? Okay. We'll reconvene in about five minutes.